The time is four o'clock. I'm going to reconvene today's regular session. We're going to open up the hearing for Blue Marmot Solar Project. It's a consolidated application once again. The file is number twenty-one dash zero fifty-two C O P and twenty-one dash zero five three C P. So, just to kind of go over a few things. We're convening this hearing to provide all sides with the opportunity to be part of the record, whether oral or in writing. The record remains open and everything submitted so far continues to be part of that record. The board of commissioners have not made and will not be making a decision today. We want to remove any sense of urgency or haste, doesn't matter. Ourself as commissioners too, we want to provide an opportunity for ourselves as commissioners to allow appropriate time and consideration. Our primary goal is to create a full record on which to eventually make our decisions. To that end, we currently plan to have a total of three public meetings, the second of which is today. There will be one final meeting in weeks to come. Excuse me, my mic apparently not on. My apologies. We may be asking questions for clarification or to elaborate. I think we may be asking more questions today than we did in the previous meeting as commissioners. Again, we want to prioritize public comment and time for rebuttal on part of the applicant so that we're as thorough as possible. As the close of this meeting today, unless something changes, we intend to close the record for any public comment at the close of this meeting. And we will allow for, I believe, what was it that we had kind of talked about before? About a week? We actually set a date, I believe, to close the comment period for the applicant as well because we would allow the applicant time for a final rebuttal. So, with that, I just ask everyone to try to be as sure as possible. We tried to have a meeting. We would like to get home before midnight tonight. So, and if you could make your comments as close and to address the actual criteria as possible, it would be very much appreciated by the group. So, with that, Mr. Bailey, do you see anything that I have left out of laying out the process?
No, just to clarify that what we're doing here, we're allowing state to find the applicant and then comment from the public and then rebuttal from the applicant. And this process, what we call the last time, happened to it ever narrow in what the subject were rather than going back to the very beginning. So, subjects are limited to what was discussed in rebuttal and then so on and so forth. So, it's narrow and narrow to go forward. So, my understanding is we will just continue that process until everybody's had a chance to say what they wanted to say for that.
Right. And for fellow commissioners, please feel free to ask as many questions as you'd like to get as many answers as should. If we close the actual record today, we won't be able to ask additional questions when we make our final decision without opening the record.
We can't ask a week's rebuttal. So, we should be able to ask questions of their rebuttal.
That's true. But we will have to make our additional, our final decision, yes. But public comment will be closed at the end of this meeting. Correct. All right. Darwin, do you have anything you'd like to lay out? We've had a lot of comments in the last even twenty-four hours.
Everybody should know why we're here. And so, I don't feel I need to go over the whole summary of the notice that was sent out. We've sent out multiple notices. This meeting itself wasn't noticed, but we announced it at the last meeting. And certainly, it's been advertised on the radio and paper and other sources. So, yeah, I don't have anything left. The board has something for me. I walked in late as we did get a few submissions late emailed to me. So, those have been forwarded to you. You won't see them until we get out of this meeting unless you've got your laptop and so on and so forth. But, yeah, everything that has been submitted, although I haven't responded to everybody, but if you emailed me or stopped by the office and dropped something off, it's definitely in the record. So, we can be sure of that. So.
All right. With that, I suppose we did open it up to the applicant. If you guys would like to start us off with any comments from the previous meeting. Sure. One would provide a couple.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for your time. Just a few brief comments in response to a few comments that were at the last hearing and that we've heard since. And I'm not going to go over everything we've provided. First of all, there's been many comments. So, I'm just going to touch on a few high-level pieces that I feel are important to address. The first, just to clear the air, give our testimony on this, is during the last hearing and in comments since, there has been accusations that EDPR approached minors on school grounds after a school event. I just want to address that upfront. Between September and October, we did some door knocking canvassing in Lake County. We were going door to door, speaking to folks about the project, answering questions. We did some canvassing in areas both north of the high school and south of the high school. But I just want to make it clear that at no point did we ever set foot on school grounds. That is how the accusations have come off, is that we went onto school grounds and purposely approached minors. That is not at all the case. We were never on school grounds and we only ever knowingly talked to those folks who we saw as older on adults. If we did speak to a minor, we did so unknowingly and not intentionally. In the instances that we were going door to door and a minor answered the door in the community, we would always ask to speak to an adult. If there was not an adult around or did not want to speak to us, we would go away. We just want to set the record straight on that. And that's all the comment I've got there. In terms of answering Commissioner Albertson, at the end of last meeting, you brought up that there were alternative reasons for us switching to the one-by-fifty site. So, I just want to kind of go over the history of the project and hopefully address what you were talking about. And if I don't address it, please let me know and I'll have to talk more to it. So, as we'd said before, it was clear early on, after we had already cited the project, had already signed a contract with DGE, that there was not support within the community for us building a project on irrigated ag land. That was made very clear. That is why, over the years, we approached DGE several times about moving off of irrigated ag land was because there was not commissioner support and there was not community support for us building our project on that. That came up again at the end of last year during, when we had initiated the EPSEC process. We had an N O I hearing, I believe it was in November, December. It was a notice of intent. It's the first stage in the EPSEC permitting process. So, at that point, we were still in the state permitting process. It was, again, made abundantly clear to us that there was no support within the community for us building a project on irrigated ag land. After that meeting, we approached DGE once again, asking to consolidate. And that is when they relented and allowed us to switch to a single site. We wanted to do that because the feedback that we received was the community wanted the project off of irrigated ag land and it also wanted us to go through the county permitting process. By switching to a single site, we accomplished both of those. By being on five sites, we had to do the EPSEC process. To potentially, maybe Commissioner, what you were referring to is that there are some efficiencies, both schedule-wise, cost-wise, to consolidating to a single site. I'm not going to pretend that that's not the case. There are also a number of additional costs that came with consolidating the site. We had the site pretty much engineered, partly through the permitting process, but there were a number of costs involved with switching to a single site. Overall, we could have continued trying to push through the EPSEC process. We would have faced hurdles trying to do that, but we heard from the community that that is not what the community wanted and that is why ultimately, we decided to switch to a single site and go through the county process. We also could have elected to switch to a single site and opt into the EPSEC process, which is also clearly not what we wanted. And so, overall, just want to make it clear that if it weren't for county feedback and if it weren't for commissioner feedback, we would have not have switched to a single site and it would have not been an impetus for us to do that. I don't know if that addresses what you were hoping for me to speak to. Also, if not, I'm happy to go further, but wanted to at least address your comment from the end of the last meeting. If there's no, if you don't want to dive into that any further, I've got one last point. The last point I want to talk to, hopefully be seen as good news. During the last meeting and previously, it's been made pretty clear that the commissioners and also that the public would like us to look back into the design of the project and potentially move some panels south of Rabbit Hill Road. South or east? What's that?
South or east?
South of the road.
Road, road, south.
Well, like curves. So, under the curve. So, it'd be southeast.
Yeah.
Thank you. So, I guess what I wanted to tell you tonight and what I've got, quite big map, is that we, I have got clearance and confirmity in tonight that we will not be building or doing any construction west of the ravine that is on that southern parcel. And so, wanted to make it clear that that was not an easy decision for us. After speaking to engineers, that parcel and that spot specifically is relatively flat and is actually really a place for panels. Some of it is a toss to us to move these. But we know that it's important to both the commissioners and the community to move those panels and so will not be building anything.
So, you're not going to be around three sides of those homes?
Here, you've got the two homes are located right here. There'd still be some panels on this side of this parcel, but there won't be any to the southwest of those homes.
Darwin, could we pull up a map of the areas for the audience to see?
I've printed a few of these if you want. These will turn here somewhere.
I can see it. Great.
You can.
Yeah.
We could pass it over.
Yeah. Bring it up on the screen too for the audience as well. Thank you.
Yep.
So, where my cursor's at right now is the ones we're seeing.
Yep. Yeah, so that southwestern portion, we will not have any construction on.
Are you trying to do that?
Yeah, I was trying to do something. Let me go to the PDF instead.
Okay, yeah. We have to. Yeah. You should be. So, that section you're scratching from.
So, that, yeah, there's that split down the middle caused by that ravine there and we won't have anything west of that ravine.
Essentially, how many acres is that in size?
I really should have calculated that, but I got that number this morning.
It was roughly forty acres, thirty-five acres.
Yeah. That's what I was thinking, just looking at the size of that. I mean, that looks about four.
Yep. And we had to shift those panels up into the rest of the layout, but we were able to find this off.
Is that increasing the footprint of the other site?
No, it'll all be within the billable area that I have. Those were the three key points that I wanted to make, at least to open and make sure that there'll be more discussion. But unless there's any questions, Commissioner, if you have any final.
Turn the floor. Any last questions?
I'll ask them.
Okay.
Okay.
Sure. Thank you.
Thanks, commissioners. We, as you saw in our rebuttal letter, we believe that the majority of public testimony that's been submitted, oh, go ahead.
Sorry, I don't know.
Your day. Maxi Oplik, attorney at Solar Reads, on behalf of the applicant. Thanks for reminding me. So, as you saw in our rebuttal letter, and I hope you've had some time to review it, we believe that the majority of public comment that's been submitted so far has been addressed by the applicant in prior rebuttal. And for all those comments that haven't been addressed, we'll be putting together another matrix similar to the one that was submitted to the planning commission that identifies every comment submitted by the public and provides the applicant's response demonstrating that the approval criteria have been satisfied or that those comments are not necessarily applicable to what the relevant approval criteria are. And as we discussed in the rebuttal letter, we've had some specific comments related to the farm impacts test, decommissioning, dust control, and things like that. And I'd be happy to answer any other questions that you might have, but otherwise, Logan and I, I will be happy to listen to public comment and then provide our oral rebuttal followed by our original rebuttal in whatever timeframe you think is appropriate. So, thank you.
All right. All right. With that, we will open it up for public comment.
Before we go to public comment, I just want to state for the record, after the last meeting, I did call Logan and I talked to him briefly. And I said that there is no way you only surveyed and engineered exactly the area that you have planned. So, he was going to look into that because that is what I asked at the last meeting, was to get both of those parcels moved that are west of Rabbit Hill Road. And the second point I made was, you know, just reiterating that their timeframe wasn't our problem. So, just want to make sure that everybody knows that I did have that discussion.
All right.
Sounds like it for you before.
Good evening. My name is Joe Cosentino, two-on-two-on-four Rabbit Hill Road. I have a few comments in addition to the comments I submitted. One of the comments, we were given the promise by EDPR that we would be able to see and look at a glare study and we have never seen anything. I did get one little email from Logan that said, or showed, some gray areas on a map, but they don't really relate to anything. I couldn't make any heads or tails of what he was trying to say or trying to convey to me in that. So, we've been waiting for that glare study. I'm in the process right now of trying to get a glare study program from, I think it's Ford Solar Company. So, I'm trying to get that so I can actually do my own study to see what really happens or what really is going to be out there, what I am going to see or what other people are going to see. Because they never did their study, as far as I know, they did their study on glare from Rabbit Hill Road. They didn't do it from a vantage point of my house or Larry Brooks's house. So, that's what really impacts us, is our view down onto this. I hope they do move everything off of those sites. But one other thing, I don't think the community here and especially out on Rabbit Hill Road and in that immediate area really wants this project out there. You know, it's going to really change the field and the wildlife in the area will really be impacted. And I don't think anybody really out there really wants that. That's not why we moved out there. We didn't want to be right in the middle of a commercial industrial program. One other thing, when EDPR did their study on artifacts, we watched them one day do the study out behind our house, kind of on that ravine that Logan was just talking about. That whole area up there was done in one day for archaeological studies. One day. Pick up shovel it dirt, move it, shake it a little bit, and move on to another site. I can't see that as actually being an archaeological study when you're just doing surface. Also, the cost to construct the project, that really shouldn't be a consideration for the county. That should be a consideration for EDPR. They're the ones that designed us and they're the ones that need to account for their cost back to their shareholders, not to us. Also, for inspection on this field, who will be doing the inspection? If this is going to be a high voltage installation, who's going to be doing the inspection on that installation? Right now, isn't there anybody on staff or anybody contracted to root the county that can actually do this work? High voltage? Because they need, basically, they need industrial permits to do it. And are they certified in doing solar field installations? Oh, yes. One little thing I want to go over real quick. On EDPR's website, there is a button you can click on for letters of support. And you can fill out whatever you want and submit it. I don't know how many people have submitted letters through that, but how do you validate those and verify that they're actually people that are concerned with this? We don't know who they are. A handwritten letter with a resident's name on it might be better, but if somebody from Anchorage, Alaska wanted to file something and approve of it, they could do that through this website. Also, it's my personal belief that at this time, the county really doesn't have adequate standards for solar field installations. And we really need to have some sort of committee forum that actually is active and moving forward with standards for construction in this county with solar farm. And I don't, I don't see anything right now with old EDPR accountable for whatever they did up there on that land. That's pretty much my comments in addition to what I've said. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Amanda Bryant. Trying to the right, oops, go over the ones I went over last time. Anyway, so, one of the things that's been talked about to me by members of the community is that we have enough solar, you know? And whether we do or not, that's everybody's opinion. But as Logan brought up at the last meeting, Lake County has the highest percentage of solar facilities in the state. We have more than any other county. And we need to kind of ask why. And it's not just because of our sunshine. Our neighboring counties of Klamath, Carney, Crook, and Deschutes all get relatively the same amount. And honestly, in this case, Deschutes would be a whole lot closer to their endpoint with P G E, so why not consider there? They do it because our renewable energy regulations were last updated forty-one years ago. And we're applying nineteen-eighties rules to twenty-twenty-one technology. The technology has outpaced our laws and they know it and they're taking advantage of us. The project's going to be in the black in roughly seven years at the latest. That was according to numbers given to me by Logan Day at Blue Marmot's open house. After that, it's a hundred percent profit for Blue Marmot. So, they're paying us pennies on the dollar for their profits that they're going to make us. And they're doing it because they know our rules and regulations are outdated and they can do it. They're playing us for fools and a laughing all the way to the bank. So, we really need to take that into consideration. They still are refusing to answer where the power will go. That was asked several times at the last meeting and the answers were, you know, electrons take the path of least resistance and it's going to mostly power homes here in Lakeview and so it's going to be really good for us. But then why are we installing transmission lines taking all the power out of here? And why aren't they selling, if it's going to be powering Lakeview homes, why aren't they selling it to Surprise Valley or Pacific Power? You know, I think P G E would be a little upset knowing that they're buying power that's powering another company's homes. But once again, they're playing us for fools. They think that we can't figure this out. You know, they, he talked again today about going door to door, knocking on doors, which I said at the last meeting, if I was in their shoes trying to garner support, I would too. And they got about thirty-five letters of support from that. What he didn't answer is how many doors did they knock on? Because you need to figure out, okay, they knocked on a hundred doors and they got thirty-five letters, they only have thirty-five percent support. If they knocked on three hundred doors, that ratio goes down significantly. I talked about ethics last time. I still think ethics is an issue. We've all had to discuss that. And they have a long history of ethical issues. The one I forgot to mention the last time was the first time E D P and Blue Marmot and EPSEC came to town. And they met with the commissioners. None of you guys were commissioners at that time, so you're in clear on that one. The commissioners had questions and the community had questions. Initially, E D P and EPSEC refused to answer questions. And then the morning of the commissioners' meeting, they said they would answer questions on one condition, that cameras were turned off. Now, cameras were turned off on that meeting because we needed answers. But that's not ethical. They shouldn't be doing that. Almost done, I promise. Eric brought up, looking at aerials, that land has been cultivated before and we found the harrow lines. There is a gentleman here who has cultivated it. In addition to that, there's another gentleman who's not here, but he has said he'd be willing to talk to you guys, Paul Powers. He used to work for a previous landowner and he was telling me of times when they would pipe the water out of the springs to irrigate that land. So, it has been done. If it's been done on the record or not, I can't speak to that. But he personally moved those pipes and moved that water and irrigated that land. So, it has been cultivated, it has been irrigated.
I'd like to know how.
That, I, yeah, I would talk to Paul about that, Paul Powers. Apparently, he said they were moving some pipes and just piping the water out of the springs to those locations. I don't really know how because I don't know the layout of that one exactly. So, that would be a Paul question. They're working with, in conjunction with the Klamath tribe for their artifact stuff. But historically, due to the resources that were in the area of Klamath, the Klamath tribe spent very little time here. The Modoc, Fort Goodwells, and the Paiute tribes of the region spent a lot more time here. Those are the, they were the ones that frequented these areas. Those are the tribes that need to be consulted and brought in on this. My letter back in August listed thirteen different tribes that have roots to this area. My letter back in August listed 13 different tribes that have roots to this area. They all have a right to be contacted because they all have the potential to have artifacts and history in this area. In addition to the glare study that Joe just mentioned, the planning commission also asked for a 3D model of the project, not just pictures such as this, so that we could get a true hands-on feel for what this project might look like when it's completed. They said, yeah, it's a good idea. I don't know if one's ever been done. I think it's a good idea. We need to see it before we really consider, instead of just, I mean, because we can all look at this, but unless we're actually looking and where we can see the real topography of the land and where they're planning on putting stuff, it's kind of hard to visualize it for some of us. Last thing, Logan mentioned at the last meeting that there might be more suitable sites, but that they simply didn't have the time because of their time constraints to consider even moving some of the sites on this particular property. But, and I know that I listed several locations in one of my objection letters. He said no other sites have been considered because they don't have the time. And I say again, it's more important that this is done correctly than it's done quickly. As you guys said, we're not on their timetable. That's, that's on them. But it needs to be done correctly and if there's better sites, they need to be considered. So they need to do, really do a full site analysis for the alternative locations to see if there is a better place for this because this isn't it. Um, that's it. I'm trying to make it quick this time.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm Jack Byrne, Byrne Ranch, Lakeview, Oregon. I have and am the president with VC of said property that we're discussing here for the past 19 years. So I have kind of a vested interest in this. I withheld comment in the past few meetings simply because I needed to see how this was going along. I primarily grazed it. It probably takes about 200, 250 AUMs on that property that we're talking about. There's also about 75 to 100 head of antelope that primarily have been on that property for the past 20 some years. And I have allowed people to get tagged to take one or two animals per year off of that. So wildlife is a concern there. There are 13 reservoirs on that piece of property. So there's a lot of ducks and geese that have used it over the years. But anyway, my primary interest in purpose was for grazing purposes only. If this goes in, of course, I will lose that lease, so I'll find some other grazing somewhere else. It was discussed about the farming aspect of this and I did farm that piece of property in the southwest corner along the power line for Glenn Plato when he owned the property. I don't know about the irrigation aspect of it. I don't know where the spring is that was used. In fact, I don't know the spring on there, but maybe Mr. Powers knew something that I didn't. So I can't address that aspect of it. But I did farm probably about 80 to 100 acres of that and planted it to permanent pasture. And then when Darrell Williams purchased that property back in about 97 or 98, he went in there, ripped it, and planted trees. And the trees did not take on the property that I leased, and so the marks are still there. But those are the ones that you see when you look at it. But I did farm, and that was about 40 years ago.
You say that you farmed the 80 acres, where was that again?
I got southwest portion of that along the power line, gone down to the draw.
Okay.
And.
East of the road. East of Rabbit Hill Road?
Yes, east of that Rabbit Hill Road. I don't lease all of that area. So it's the power line. East is primarily what I'm the VC of, 900 plus acres. And Glenn Plato was the owner of that property at that time, and that's why I did 40 years ago. So, and to the best of my knowledge, that was about the last time it was ever bought. I don't ever remember being turned up at the on that. As to the rest of it, I really don't have too much comment. It may be the best use of the land, you know, when you look at it economically, return to own investment and everything else, but it's primarily grazing and it does, I am not necessarily in favor of a lot of solar. I think we had a, we have a lot. I mean, all I have to do, every day, I travel from the west side to the east side and look at all that solar on the airport aspect of it. And it looks like a lake out there some days. I am not in favor. And we stated that in, back in May, April, that of taking solar and putting it on irrigated ground. I had to, one property that was going to be that way, south of Lakeview. I still have that lease, I'm not in favor of that. And as chairman of the water users, we had another property that was going to affect us as water users, and I'm not in favor of that. So consolidating to one property was beneficial in that aspect of it from irrigated, irrigated land point of view. But I, I kind of agree with a lot of people that we've got an awful lot of solar and it just keeps coming at us. And I'm not in favor of that. So I don't think a lot of the landowners, and I don't think people are trying to drive or looking from ag or in favor of this. So it's cutting up. I mean, houses are cutting up and this is cutting up more property. It makes it tougher for us to buy and place a quick cattle. And if you get downside, you start moving out. And that's not exactly what I haven't liked, so. But the dollar speaks, so that's what we are. I don't.
So Jack, so how long have you been in the ranching business and your family?
Well, my family has been here for 145 years. We've been on the same ranch, south of Lakeview, at that length of time. I've been in ranching business for 45 years, since I came home from college, Oregon State in 1980.
So can you tell people what an AUM is because some people might not know?
It's an animal unit month. It's one, the bee that is drive for one animal for one month.
And so in other words, 250 head of cows run on that every month during the.
100 head for two months.
Two months.
That's primarily what I put on that piece of property.
So since you went to Oregon State, I imagine you went to do agriculture.
I did.
So would you consider pasture or rangeland? Would you consider rangeland since you?
Absolutely.
That's all I have, but. Thanks for the history.
This is Bradbury, that's Oregon, 15th South East Street. Last week, I attempted to sell some property on Rabbit Hill Road. I had to disclose the fact that there was this upcoming solar project coming in and the buyers jackrabbed it, had no interest in it at all. When you were on top of Jack Rabbit, or Jack, it's not Jack Rabbit, Rabbit Hill Road, it has amazing vistas and views of the county. And because of the way that the property is dispersed up there, with the exception of the devil lake, which, I think that it has some interesting potential to bring a different kind of labor. We're starting to see that really about most of the, I would say estimate, about one-third of the property in Lake County actually is bought by people in Lake County, two-thirds of people coming out of other locations, California, some Montana, some from the Val Anan Valley. A lot of these people are bringing jobs here because they work remotely. And so they have horses, they have different interests, they have higher income, per capita income than we're probably used to, and they want a place to get away where they can work remotely. On that note, I think that what Lakeview is becoming, and what people are coming here for, is not to have a main corridor within a city for lack of better word, polluted by solar panels. And then what it comes down to, we have to ask some hard questions about what our economic future in Lake County is gonna be. We have been trying to replace timber for years, since the spotted owl. Natural resources and renewable resources look like a good route, but relationship that we have with the greater outside community and timber was that we got to keep a lion's share of the profits from that. Solar panels, natural resources, and companies like Blue Marmot are basically extracting our natural resources without equally compensating us for that resource. So the big pitch was that there was gonna be the construction. That's great. They're gonna bring in 2.6 million. I don't know what the exact term was, it's 1.7. And then there's gonna be two full-time jobs. Well, I call yes on that because the other remaining solar panels technicians all have to complement their climate. So when they come, they build the things, they're gonna have to insert the jobs and they're gonna build the panels, we're gonna lose property values and potential people that would move here that would bring jobs. And they're never gonna put those two technicians here. They'll subcontract to another company, probably method or climate, and we'll have net new jobs and really the only goods we've got will be a very short-term one while they construct this.
Thank you, Commissioner, for your time. Clark Maxwell, 23036 Maxwell Road.
And Melissa.
And Melissa Maxwell.
We both read the letter.
So this is actually kind of an adaptation to a letter that we mailed to the state in 2018. Basically, I don't wanna go ahead and repeat everything that everyone has already said here, but anyways, like Jack Byrne's family, my family's been here since 1870s and has lived on property that neighbors us for, since about 1910. So obviously, we've seen a lot of changes. We've tried to save these wide open spaces as good as we can. I think that this, the economic gain for the county will never replace what they're gonna lose from, from the eyesore of 500 acres of solar panels. The wildlife habitat that is lost, I too have seen the 70 to 100 head of antelope my whole life there. And you put up a seven-foot fence that covers that, I mean, basically that's building a wall. And I talked about this in the planning commission meeting. It's just gonna be a trap. I mean, every coyote in the county is gonna be there when those, the fawns are hitting the ground and everything is happening. It also takes away some of the last remaining bitter brush habitat. That is, a lot of that land is covered by bitter brush. And for the people that don't know it, that is a critical winter fall browse for these eel deer and antelope. So you start taking that out and then these antelope and deer go into winter in poor condition. And because of all these fires, everything's in poor condition already, so what's gonna happen? It's gonna keep going downhill. Unfortunately, the Uru property is owned by someone that doesn't even live here and he could probably care less which way it goes. Unfortunately, the ones that do live here do care which way it goes. And I think the property value that are in the surrounding houses, I mean, you might as well take those and cut them in half. They won't even be able to sell them, let alone be able to, you know, even live there while waking up every morning and looking at that, what is out their bedroom window. Also, like Amanda talked about, the Indian tribes, I guarantee that you give me five days and I could, I could find a camp out there. So anyways, there's water running, those Indians were there. So thank you guys for your time. And like I talked about before, you know, let's think about legacy. Let's go and think about 500 acres of solar panels because that is, it's not what I want my kids to look at in 35 years, so. Let's see what I think.
No. It's in the letter.
So can I still submit this? Thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, I'm Hena Harden, and I live on Rabbit Hill Road. And at the end of the meeting, someone had asked Blue Marmot, are you gonna cut down those trees? And they said, yes, those trees never belonged in there anyway. And I thought to myself, those trees, yes, they may have been a failed crop, but they are trees and we value trees here in Lake County. And for them to say they're gonna cut them down, and I've watched them struggle to grow for 20 years and to be replaced by a pole and a housing with a solar panel in 35 years, what will we have there if they cut those trees down? A pole and hazardous waste. What would we have if they didn't cut those trees down? Yes, they're not commercially viable trees, but they're still trees and they provide habitat to the deer and wildlife out there. They might not be quote "natural," they might be approaching, but regardless, they're trees.
They ponderous.
They're ponderous pine that were actually excess trees from the forest. They're out of elevation, which is why they're stunted, but they are growing. They are from Lake County. So I, I, to hear the flip of the remark of they don't belong there anyway, they belong there. They are from Lake County. Do those poles and those solar panels have the same proprietary to be there? That's the question for the county commissioners. Are we bettering that land by having a solar panel? Thank you.
There is a black fact, I thought you wanted to stop that one. I'm gonna speak from experience from the stock drive solar panels and airport solar panels.
Does he live in between them?
I live in between them. I have had to live through trucks going like a bat out of heck. Keep my language nice. They tried to, they were running us off the road, no stop sign usage. They were horrible. They were going to work in the morning, they were coming back from work, 50 cars or so. You couldn't even get out of your driveway and they were going like a bat out of heck. And you couldn't get a hold of anybody to slow them down because there wasn't anybody to get a hold of. You weren't allowed on the site. If you called the cops, what were they gonna do? They had no clue which truck driver it was because there were so many. I brought this point up to Mark yesterday and it's something to consider with the wildlife. I had lived out there, well, a short time I lived in Tiam, but I've lived there my whole life. So over the last 16 years, there used to be deer everywhere. There were antelope, even over on across the road with your family. There are no antelope out there at all now. I used to never be able to have a flower because the deer were there. This year, I have seen five, five deer. They were always standing in the wintering and even now, where the stock drive, the little solar panels. They were on airport, probably. They're not there now, but there are not one or two coyotes. I had somebody actually call me and say, weren't you shooting those coyotes across the road? And I'm like, what do you mean? Because there's seven out there right now and one of them is a trophy. This is an every night thing, they're running through my yards, my yard. I have to watch my dog going out. So with all those fences that you have up out there, why do you think there's so many deer in town? They have nowhere else to go. It was their native habitat. So with these poor people out on Rabbit Hill, the stewards, I, I can only imagine what it's gonna do to the animals in this quarter, with the forest fires. There's not a whole lot left out there. So I, and I could keep going, but I'm gonna shut up right now. So thank you for your consideration. I just wanted to point out that there's more to this than just money. this than just money.
Evening. I'll, I'll try to talk. I just got out of a disappointment. The ground's so high down the face of this little thing. But Eric, if you want, 675 Rabbit Hill Road. So we talked about where the power is, is going. And one of the comments made by the DPD of Blue Marmot is that it's going to stay within the county's limits and then in Lakeview. We already have how many solar panels that are, are providing power within this county. So we know it's going elsewhere. Where it goes, that's, you know, that's, that's how we make profit. Uh, but it is not staying within this county. Also cumulative effects, we talked about multiple solar panels within the county and within the Moose Lake Basin, but nobody has done the cumulative effect analysis of more solar panels than others can do, not only environmentally, natural resource wise, but economically, they impact property values. Also, residents of the county who are promised, Commissioner Albertson had put together, started that group to, to look at our land use and renewable energy and solar panels. That still has not gone, been done. I, I just hope that the commissioners would carry through with the promise of, of looking at that before we carry on with other projects. Economically, you know what? Solar panel companies are lined up. So what if we took a little bit of time in order to figure out what's best for this county? The economic benefits will be there. And the county, I think citizens will get their say as well. But we don't have that yet. Thank you.
So just quickly, we do have the solar committee in place. I don't know when the last time they met. Are you the chairman, Charlie?
Well, I'm convenient. We haven't met since June. We had a lot of discussion. We don't need to get into that right now.
But just to say, we have the.
It wouldn't have changed this application. The law couldn't have been adopted before this application was submitted.
I'm just asking, how did the way that all that group comes up with recommendations for land use and causes solar power?
Hi. I'm Teresa Berry Decker. I live at 15989, Highway 395 South. I have three letters with me. I'm not going to read all of them. One is from Bill Berry, who's a former commissioner and a lifelong resident and a farmer. He's farmed land here and raised land cattle and sheep on his land. He was a sheepfrier. That's how far back we go. Says he was a child and he's very much concerned about these solar panels coming in and would support you not voting for. The other letter is from Dan Decker, not in favor. I have a letter I'll read to you. My relatives have been ranching and farming in the Lake County since the 1860s. Our family is still farming the land that has been in the family for over 100 years. The agricultural uses have changed several times over the years and may change in the future. So it is imperative that any land near Lakeview not be marred so as to make any type of future agriculture use impossible. I am against allowing a large solar farm to be built near Lakeview. Allowing the solar farm is not desired by county residents and wrong on many levels. A solar farm should not be put on farmland or potential farmland, especially land with potential for irrigation. My understanding is that this land has been cultivated in the past. A solar farm should not be put near livestock, which can negatively impact, be impacted by the solar equipment. Livestock are also in that same category. The benefit, excuse me, wildlife is in that same category. The benefit to Lake County is not significant. The 15 million over 35 years is 3% increase in county revenue. If the solar farm exists for 35 years. If. The technology will be obsolete long before that. Are they going to keep it up? We don't know. If a solar farm were to be allowed, there should be absolutely guaranteed, there should absolutely be guaranteed funds for complete cleanup provided to the county prior to the project being started. I'm concerned about supports through structures going up to eight feet in ground and a cleanup only going down three feet. That would result in decreasing the value of the land, therefore decreasing tax revenues and leaving problems for future generations of farmers and residents. The power generated by the solar farm is not staying locally. The solar company has contracted self-powered Portland General Electric. So the benefit, this benefits residents 300 miles away. It's an eyesore to our beautiful land. Our county officials need to follow the law and preserve the maximum amount of agricultural land so that we can maintain a healthy economy for the people of state. Our county officials should not allow a large solar farm to be built near Lakeview. Any questions?
Have a couple more things. Is that okay with you guys?
Sure.
One thing that just came up about the spring. My name's Joe Constantino, Rabbit Hill Road. That spring that was referred to is down the ravine, right behind my house. It comes down, it's not even on this map plate. Yeah, down, yeah, a little bit further down. It's a seasonal spring and it'll start running anywhere around the time the snow starts melting. And depending on the year of the snow, depending on how much we get, it'll run up until early August, just depending on how much snow we get. Sometimes it goes as soon as early July, it'll stop. But every year, we do have cat bulls and frogs down there, every year. Get a lot of birds in there from that. That's really all I have. So it runs north and then west. Yes, it runs northwest and it goes down into the retention pond down at the bottom of that. And that's, yeah, that's where it terminates, down further. Yeah, down that area, there's a retention pond. I can't really see it on the map. No, it's right down the ravine. There's one up at the top. That doesn't seem to be on the map either, but I can see. But there's a dam built up just behind our house a little bit. And there's a big retention pond up, up in there too. And that'd be both of those. There's a couple of springs back up in there that are seasonal. But every year, the ponds go up. So, thank you.
Clark, is that side of the road grazed? Is that? Yeah, is that the gate?
No, that, that would be, um, loops on that.
My name's George Hunter and I live on the side road. And um, most of the creatures that I oppose this project have been saved by other people, but the ones that I feel very strongly about are the wildlife. The fences that really divide that area north and south and eliminate corridors for wildlife movement. I also feel there's something that we need to preserve, uh, I just control on. And um, I live near the airport solar facilities and um, it is a horrible eyesore. I'm sorry that we never did it. People that live near it are affected by it visually and in other ways. And I just wanted to say here again that we have enough solar, what we have is not, is not done well and we don't need more.
Additional further comment? Would uh, maybe uh, is it going to be taken at a quick rate before the rebuttal or would we like to move on to rebuttal first?
I'd like to move on.
Okay.
People.
You guys like?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, there's um, a few points. I don't have full rebuttal on everything that's been said. I have to look on that, that format is speaking. But a few points that I, I will make to Mr. Constantino's notes that we have not provided the glare study, just for the record. The glare study is an appendix through the application. So we've divided.
Which appendix is that again?
Yes, I think I just saw that.
Appendix E, Commissioner.
Correct. Official appendix E.
One other point, a few different notes were made about cultural surveys and our interaction with the tribes. A little background on that is that we first and foremost do have to conduct cultural surveys on our sites and everywhere that the project touches. So not just the Dubru site, but also, you know, substation land, medium voltage lines, all of that. That has been done. The way that cultural studies generally work is we go out, we do what is generally accepted. We then had to run those studies and the methods by both SHPO and the tribes. And during the course of our surveys and our reporting, both SHPO and the tribes provided us input and feedback on our methods and information that we provided. In some instances, we had to go back out and do additional surveys based on their feedback and also had to do additional analysis. At the end of the day, we've submitted a report to SHPO, which at this point, that may come wrong, but they did not, well, they did have comment which we wouldn't do with that method since, provided their sign off on our methods and final report for cultural resources. In terms of working with the tribes, we did work primarily with the climate. We also worked a little bit with the Burne Paiute tribe. They were not actively engaged. They, we presented them a couple times. And then we continued sending them information and did not get really a lot of feedback from them on anything past the initial outreach, lump down of the project, methods and methodology. And we did do additional outreach to a number of other tribes as well, telling them where we're building the project, where we're surveying. And it was really only the climate that remained heavily involved, the Burne Paiute that was somewhat involved, and then the other tribes that we reached out to remain actively involved really at all. And that's a multi-year surveying effort that we had to undergo to first, for the entire five by 10, five different sites. But also within that, the final report was based on the single Dubru site. So that was a pretty extensive process that we went through from a cultural resources standpoint. And for confidentiality reasons, those sites that were identified can't be, can't be sent or identified in the layouts. That's just common practice because otherwise people can go out and try and find them and dig up those resources. That's why you don't see that in any of the maps or anything like that. Those have been turned over to the state and the tribes and we've got their, you know, we've worked with them steadily on that. So in terms of how the whole SHPO process works, that's kind of a lump down of tribal engagement and SHPO engagement. In terms of, Mr. Constantino made a note about inspection and high voltage. In terms of inspections, we will have an operations team. We are currently planning for them to work out of the Lakeview area. We are not planning for them to be outsourced from some other county or city. We're actually looking at office space in Lakeview today to try and find, we're looking comps on that right now, in order to understand where those O and F volts are worked out of. And then in terms of installing the high voltage and medium voltage lines, we have to hire licensed contractors for all of our construction work and all of our maintenance work. And so that's, those are requirements that we have to abide by. Already touched on that. So Brian brought up that we have some good other sites as detailed in the previous meeting and more detail in our application. There's a full alternative analysis that we had to run through. I won't go through that in depth again, but there was some pretty lengthy analysis that went into picking the Dubru site. And then that I believe is all I have at the moment.
Thanks again. Thank you commissioners. Again, Maxi Oakley from Solarids LLP on behalf of the app again. So just start just by reiterating something that Darwin said, which is that the current standards that are in place are what's applicable to this application. The county may be in the process of looking at land use and renewable energy in Lake County as they're entitled to do. But for terms of this application, what's relevant is the current Lake County zoning ordinance, the Lake County comprehensive plan, the Oregon statutes and regulations that are applicable, applicable to this project. And we walked through all of those application standards and criteria in lots of detail throughout the application, but I'll try and walk through some of the public comments just to give a little bit more clarity on what we're proposing. So we've heard a few comments about decommissioning and what's going to happen at project retirement. So as we mentioned at the last meeting, the applicant has committed to providing financial assurance at the construction phase rather than two years prior to project retirement and decommissioning. And the standard is RS 215.4463, which requires a reasonable likelihood of financial assurance to restore the site to a useful non-hazardous condition. So if you look at the restoration and financial assurance plan, which is appendix H of the application, it lays out all of the project components, very specific steps to restore the project to useful non-hazardous condition as required under the statute. And then it also provides an estimate. I believe this is one of the figures of all the project components, the cost of decommissioning, it's appendix C of exhibit H. And kind of breakdown of costs. And then if you look at exhibit C of appendix H, it's a letter demonstrating that EDP renewables has the ability to obtain significant financial assurance to provide for the terms of the restoration and financial. financial assurance to provide for the terms of the restoration of financial assurance plan. Um, an applicant will also be proposing, uh, red lines of the conditions of approval for this, uh, project that would ensure that the decommissioning and retirement follows the terms of this plan, um, and that the financial assurance will be available to the county. So there won't be an, um, you know, dollar amount stuck with the county. That's the purpose of the financial assurance. Um, and in addition, you know, these, these types of conditions that we're proposing are essentially the same as what an applicant would be held to at EFSEC. So this is a higher decommissioning standard than most other projects have committed to. Um, so that's decommissioning. And how many of you can answer any other questions on that?
Um, so on decommissioning, do you want to ask further?
Yeah, sure. So you guys made the commitment, um, they, you know, you kind of stated upfront in the first meeting that, you would, uh, buy the bond. Is that correct?
Uh, we would have a decommissioning bond employee.
Decommissioning bond the first year so that it's in place.
Yeah.
To show the commitment to decommission.
Correct.
So, you know, in my homework with, uh, this and listening, you know, just doing some homework and whatnot, a lot of these solar sites sell, right? Is that correct? I mean, they change hands. I think that's pretty common knowledge. We've had the one out where they took the uranium tail, it's just going to town. Uh, that is pretty, you know, changed hands. You know, they change hands. I think that's fairly common. So a bond, if I understand this right, um, is with Blue Marlin or EDPR. But once you sell to another company, what happens to the bond, decommissioned?
At the end of the day, uh, whoever ends up purchasing the project, if that were to happen and be clear, that's not our plan for this project, um, is responsible for all the same permitting requirements as the project is. This is, the conversation of decommissioning bond is on the record as part of the CUP discussions. The CUP will run with the project throughout the lifetime of the project. So whoever ends up purchasing the project will have to follow the same criteria that we did. And so they were to take over, they may have to put a new bond in place, but they will have to have a bond that's going to.
Is that a condition of the sale? Uh, I mean, you know, you're not selling anything. We realize that right now, but.
Yeah.
Cause, uh, I'm not aware that we were notified of the sale and maybe that was before I was Commissioner. North of town, about any bond or anything. I mean, we need to do a look on that. So.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I, um, I.
I can probably guarantee that the bond will continue if you determine the price of the stuff. I mean, and maybe you can't answer that.
So that, that's something you could address through conditions of approval and we'd be happy to work with the county attorney to come up with, you know, language that's satisfactory to the commissioners to ensure that a bond is provided. But as Logan was explaining, um, if the project were to sell, uh, the new project owner would be required to comply with the terms of the conditional use permit, which would include these conditions of approval. So if the condition of conditional use permit conditions require a bond to be in place and for the project owner to follow the terms of the financial assurance plan, then that is what they'd be held to and the county can come and say, you haven't provided the bond, you're out of compliance with conditional use permit and you can't continue to operate unless you're in compliance with our terms. So, you know, this is, that's the thing that follows the, the lands and the county has authority to enforce those conditions. So like I said, we can work on language if, if that would be helpful. Um, but. But let's, let's clear it up. Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Um, so next I'll just touch on wildlife. Um, so we've had plenty of comments about all of the wildlife that have been observed on the project site. Antelope, avian species, um, you know, critters. I just direct the commissioners to review the applicant's, um, habitat assessment plan, which is an appendix S of the application. So the requirement under Oregon law RS two fifteen point four four six is for the applicant to conduct a project assessment, consult with Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife and follow the Department of Fish and, and I shouldn't say follow, but, um, look at the Department of Fish and Wildlife's habitat mitigation policy to ensure that unavoidable impacts have been mitigated. And as you know, ODFW has agreed to the proposed habitat mitigation plan. Um, we've come up with a habitat mitigation ratio in consultation with ODFW, um, that is based on the site characteristics, the existence of the habitat and wildlife that was found to exist on the property. Um, and as we mentioned in the rebuttal letter, the mitigation ratio is not a set formulaic type of condition. It is a site-specific analysis that depends on many characteristics. Um, and so I just also wanted to note that, um, there was a public comment that said for airport solar, antelope were no longer observed on the project site after the site was constructed. That's because they moved to other habitat. And that's kind of the purpose of the habitat mitigation plan as John. Hi. Plan takes other property that's of lower habitat value and uplifts that property to provide better habitat for the land that's being displaced. And that's the whole purpose of the habitat mitigation standard and the statute. And we followed that standard to a T, I would almost say, you know, better than a lot of other applicants in the past have. And we presented all that information to you. So, um, we'd be happy to discuss that in further detail if you have questions. But we believe that we've satisfied all the statutory and, um, local approval criteria for unavoidable impacts to.
Going on that, um, going, going back to the actual mitigation plan, um, it is appendix two point two. So in, within that, I, I believe it's the third paragraph where it talks about, uh, one point four to one, um, mitigation. But at the last meeting, it stayed with one point eight, you know. So was that, was that altered?
Yeah, so.
Clear it up in my hand.
Yeah, thanks for asking, Commissioner. Um, so we consulted with ODFW throughout the application process, even after the application was submitted. And there's been, there's an updated habitat mitigation plan that's been submitted to the record that's approved by ODFW. And that's where you will see the one point eight to one mitigation ratio and I'm not sure.
And I believe I did see that somewhere in the record when I read through it, when I'm looking at this appendix right here, it still says one point four.
Yeah, so where applicants committed to following the habitat mitigation plan that's been approved by ODFW, which replaces the one that's in this appendix right here.
Okay. Um, and I'm still personally, and this is just myself as one commissioner, I'm not comfortable with, uh, the one point eight even. Uh, in past practices, we typically stayed with the two to one. Um, we've actually gone as far as three to one mitigation. Um, but I think that at least maintain, at least as far as this board has gone, we've typically stayed with the two to one mitigation. Of course, it's not a requirement by law, but due to past practice and precedent that I think is important, we maintain as a fairer practice as we treat other applications. So in doing that, and I understand that you're also removing about forty acres of your application. Um, just the math that I'm quickly doing here, prior to removing, we had about a hundred and fifteen acres left to get you to that two to one. So removal of that forty, we put you still at another seventy some odd acres of treatment. Now, I understand that treatment in this specific area might not be that much of a, that not be the, might not be the same options available. But there are other lands in Lake County in close proximity to this that could be treated. And, um, we had an update actually, and this is just me thinking out loud. Um, we had an update from Green Diamond Timber Company, uh, for the record, just a few days ago. Uh, where Green Diamond came to update us after severe fires of this last fire season ripped through this county and destroyed a great deal of Green Diamond's property. And, uh, much of which they will not be able to repair. And along with a number of streams and, um, water corridors, uh, that, uh, quite honestly, they don't have a huge amount of intention of planting some trees over the entirety of the area because there's some areas that can't plant trees again. Uh, not for some time because the ground was cooked, soils and everything else. They're not ready for that. Water corridors, however, are very important. I try to work as closely as I can with our watershed committee here in the county. Those water corridors, especially in drought seasons, are really important to keep them alive. Well, so to cut to the click of it, I still think that there's room for additional mitigation in this county to get you to the two point one, uh, two to one, excuse me. And, um, and I think through collaboration with some of these other entities, I think you guys could achieve that. Um, with the watershed council, with ODFNW and looking for the best because I, I, we just attended a weed, our weed management committee. Uh, we're, we're concerned about after all these severe fires and the impacts from them of the weed issues that we quite honestly can't physically address. Not all at once with the, with just the sheer impact that we've seen. So I think, I think there is room to get to that two to one. And I think that, uh, it's something as a, that I'd like to put forward as a condition of approval if we're going to continue going down this, to just maintain consistency with past practices and stay at that two to one. Of course, that only gives you another seventy some odd acres. I don't think it's a huge ask, but I think it's important. If you guys really do want to be seen as good neighbors in the community, I think that it's need to stay at two to one.
Understood. Thank you, Commissioner, for that perspective. And we certainly appreciate, you know, the many impacts to habitat that this county has been experiencing. It's within the county's discretion to determine what the appropriate habitat mitigation ratio is. Um, you know, when ODFW and the habitat and the applicant don't come to an agreement. So as you know, ODFW has agreed to the ratio we proposed, so.
I understand that.
That's, that's what I would say. But they also did recommend, um, you know, a standard practice, as you mentioned, a two, two to one mitigation ratio, so.
Well, and I understand that completely. And I understand why ODFNW would likely, um, agree to the one point eight.
Certainly.
To the one, uh, being that it's not necessarily a requirement by law, as you point out, it is at the discretion of the county. In fact, we could demand even higher, uh, mitigation, but, uh, two to one has been a practice in the past.
Yeah, yeah. I, we completely understand and we thank you so much for that perspective, as I mentioned. So, um, we'll certainly comply with whatever conditions the county places on this project, um, including whether that, that means finding more land to mitigate for habitat.
And again, this is just my opinion. Uh, in the end, I think it's something that we as a board will still have to discuss further. I'm just putting it out there because I believe it surprises everybody's in Christmas. And I'm not trying to surprise anyone. Catch you off guard is something that I'm thinking about right now as I'm going through this. Um, I think that there's room for additional mitigation, given the impact that has also been pointed out by many of the community through public comment that it has impacted wildlife. We're not giving the wildlife many places to go. We've seen in past practices and other solar facilities where it disappears, the coyotes move in and we want to see, you know, those, those impacts mitigated at least in other areas. It might not be exactly adjacent, but we as county commissioners will get this in accounting, so we're looking at this on broad scope.
Yeah.
The other, yeah, the other thing I wanted to just quickly go back to, just because I'm, I'm not quite understanding this and this might be because, you know, maybe I'm, I'm ill, I don't know. But, uh, I'm, I'm reading through this and I don't quite understand this, uh, in, in appendix E, going back to the glare, um, discussion. And I believe this is actually page one of that, yes. Page one of the appendix E, um, related to the glare study. On the third paragraph down says, there are no, um, predicted glare occurrences for nearby residents or roadways as a result of the proposed single access tracking solar arrays. These results are based on the application of Federal Aviation Administration, GLINT and GLAIR standards in the absence of non-aviation regulatory guidelines. What does it mean to be in act, when we're applying Federal Aviation Administration standards? In the absence of non-aviation regulatory guidelines to address something for residents on the ground? If you're applying non-aviation regulatory guidelines, but you're also applying the federal, uh, or you're, it's in the absence of those non-aviation regulatory. It seems like there's a double negative.
Yeah.
Are they not following?
No, yeah. Thank you, Commissioner, for your question. Um.
Or maybe that's not something you can answer quite right away.
I, yeah.
Doesn't make sense to me.
I won't pretend to be an expert on that. Um, the extent of my knowledge is that, um, we, we hired a firm, I will certainly reach out to them for additional information, um, and feedback on this, which we can provide you. Um, as to where those standards come from and how they are used. What I can say from a glare analysis standpoint, um, is each, um, whether it be, there, there's an analysis in there for the local airports, there's one for residences, there's one for roadways. I know that they take their tool, um, and their analysis methods and apply them at different heights. Um, and so it details in there, uh, what the heights are.
It has a unitary.
Exactly. Um, and so my understanding of that is that the, uh, they use the methods they have for analyzing glare at those different heights. But I can certainly look into, further into how aviation standards, um, can should be used for, for like residences.
See, that's the thing because this, this is the paragraph where it addresses the impacts for residents. It says you're applying the Federal Aviation Administration GLINT-inway standards. Which of course, yeah, apply to aviation, right? But it says it's in the absence of non-aviation regulatory.
Well, how I would understand that is that they're, uh, the FAA is probably the only agency out there that has put out any sort of standards. And so they're, or they are the highest standards and so that is why they've applied them to non-aviation residences and, uh.
But it says it's in the absence of those.
Right, but there isn't, but that's what I'm saying. It's my guess is that there, because there are no other standards, they're using the one standard they have. I think it.
It says this exact same phrase three different times in this appendix. And maybe I'm just not understanding it. I think it's worth it very obviously.
I, I can certainly look into it.
And if I could just add on to that, because as Logan said, it was prepared by a third party, so, um, we haven't prepared this analysis. But my reading of it is that there are no standards or guidance or regulation for conducting any type of glare analysis other than what's put out by the Federal Aviation Administration. So that is the guiding light. That is the standard for GLINT and GLAIR. And that is what this study, I think, looked at.
So the study is basically saying that it has no way of gauging the GLINT and GLAIR impacts to residents and homes. It is only looking at the impacts to the airport and the aviation and the surrounding area.
I think what it's saying is that there's, they're taking the analysis tools required by the FAA and applying them to lower. Right, but there, those are the tools developed to satisfy the FAA and they are using those on non-airport locations. Because those are the tools that they have and those are the standards that they developed those tools on them.
Right. So it specifically analyzed impacts on residences and roadways, as it says in the first paragraph. But it used the FAA standards and approaches to make that analysis. Because there are no other standards and approaches apparently, I've put into this report.
We can certainly get some of the general variations straight from the source. I'll leave that one alone for now. Any additional questions or any additional testimony onto the panel?
Do you want to go ahead there? I got a whole bunch of questions that I think we'll talk. Okay, so on your original application, your application finding a fact. It says the project spans, you'll page two of that. So the project spans multiple properties for which the existing conditions vary. Please refer to attached figure three in the appendix for an aerial imagery and maps that depict the existing positions and surroundings of the property. So would that be considered partitioning or subdividing?
I think your question is whether placing this project on multiple tax lots would be considered a subdivision or partition?
Or, or partition.
Um, no.
Either, either or, either one of the questions, no.
No, sir, it wouldn't be a, a partition or a subdivision. That's the process of taking one parcel and splitting it into one or two or more parcels and there's a separate set of criteria and standards.
But isn't that what you did just now when you took that one property and moved it?
We'll still own that property, we just won't build up.
So in your, also in your application, it says that you guys will follow the guidelines of local, state and federal guidelines. And you guys agree that you do that. So I got a couple of questions on that. So in our own county land use book, give you the exact, our comprehensive plan, land development ordinance. And the reason why I asked Mr. Vernon about the range land. On agriculture, it says the, um, the classification designated those are areas suitable for, for and desirable to be maintained in agriculture, use and activities. This is an important part of ensuring efficient and financially successful farm and ranch operations and which through their production of food and employment of local people affects the economic well-being of the region. Is essential to the integrity of these areas if productive, if productivity is to be maximized and maximized, uh, and minimized. Oh, excuse me, maximized and financial and social and physical hardships and conflicts are, are to be minimized. And so that's just under the agriculture paragraph. So do you guys think you're con, con, making, although the state doesn't require use of any ordinance that says you're reducing property taxes or reducing property values, and here it's clear that it says, are you creating a financial, social or physical hardship for your neighbors? And so I just wanted to bring that point. On the very front page.
Pardon me Commissioner, I'm sorry for interrupting. Could you repeat which specific standard that is?
That's under, in our book, it's page six, it's under number one on agriculture. On the very front page, it goes to what Mr. Maxwell was saying and what many of us ranchers, farmers think here. The very first page, it true, uh, it has a quote from Ruben Long, who was a co-author in the Oregon desert. It says, "My father, when I was young, said, 'Ruben, my boy, when you grow up and get land, when you grow up, get land. God has quit making land, but he keeps right on making people.'" I think the whole reason that they put that in there was that our land is everything to us. And so it's very important that we do the right thing for our heritage, our culture. And so on and so forth. So I asked Mr. Vernon about would that land be considered range? Because he spent several years out there, twenty seven years grazing cattle. And so the actual definition of range land is open country use for grazing or hunting animals. Land that naturally produces forage, plants suitable for grazing, but where rainfall is too low to, or erratic to grow crops. That's the definition of range. Also in our county ordinance book talks about range land. And what range land is, that's on page eleven, it's section two titled range. It says, um, range designated areas subdividing should be prohibited and partitioning allowed only if such uses do not have adverse effects on mobile or farming ranching or ranching activities in the area. Uh, the next paragraph says, "Partitioning of range designated lands into parcels of one hundred and sixty acres or more may be processed by the planning administrator, providing that these reasonable assurance that the parcels will continue to be used for range purposes." That's, um. I wanted to, hi, sir, you guys.
Uh, would you mind if I responded briefly before you move on?
Love you too.
Uh, okay, so thank you for, um, pointing those provisions out. I'm reviewing the Lake County Comprehensive Plan as well. And plan interpretation of this is that the range description that you read from page eleven is what pertains to land that has been designated as range land under the Lake County Comprehensive Plan. So the land underlying the Duburu site or the solar array would be located according to the Lake County Comprehensive Plan map is agricultural rather than range, which is why the agricultural standards are the standards that we've been addressing in our application. So my interpretation is that the range land standards and goals would not be applicable here and in order for them to be applicable would require a change to the comprehensive plan to re-designate that property as range land under the comprehensive plan, which is not what we're asking for.
I, I'd probably have to argue. Because it might be designated range land, but it's used in.
Designated range, uh, agriculture.
Yeah, it's an agriculture use.
It's range.
Okay. And so.
Not, I appreciate that, thanks.
So, um, I wanted to ask you guys first, um, I'm going to ask you a question, you guys can hang tight because I'm going to ask you some more here. So darling, what were all those houses out on Rabbit Hill, what was their designation?
They're all zoned A1 agriculture.
And so.
Exclusive farmland.
So would you consider that a neighborhood?
No, it's, it's not a neighborhood in, in what you're determining like a residential zone. I mean, they're different things if our, for a zone, our district is going to point to. I don't believe we define neighborhood by our ordinance. Should have worked, used probably multiple times.
So, okay, so now I got some questions for you guys. And so Logan, I mean, you've talked before in the past, you know, prior to these meetings and so we've talked pretty deeply on how things were handled prior to you coming on. And so I don't want you to take any of my questions personally because they're not directed towards you personally. They're directed towards your company. What, so here's a few, here's one of my questions. What do the solar panels use to absorb energy? What is the product? They're polysilicon? Silicone? Polysilicon, yeah. So. Do you know what, is there a certain brand of solar panels that you're going to use?
There's a brand that we are currently preparing.
So what is your plan for usage?
I don't know that off the top of my head, I'm not certain that I can expose that publicly, is there?
Okay. Do you have the solar panels on hand?
Yeah, I'm not sure I'm supposed to address that publicly, but we, I, I think we have some of them already purchased.
Um, let's see. Okay, so here's what I'm getting at. I have, prior to you coming on, I had people I heard screwing up with my business and does your company expect the county to get in a contract, third year contract with the company that we don't trust? And I'm, I'm just flat out telling you how it is, you know how I am, so. And so, so with that said, um, your company is owned by foreign government or twenty percent of your company is owned by the Chinese government. About nineteen points of. And so my problem with that is, is on August twenty first, the New York Times came out with solar companies in China that produce polysilicon for the absorption of energy from solar plants. And the United States government shut them down because they were using slave labor. And what the problem is, is that not only is it a terrible thing to use slave labor, what has happened is, is that it's, you got a hard time getting the product. And I don't think you can get the product in time. And so, and I just, I just really do not want to do business with communist China. It's states from a report from Sheffield University that two point six million dollars in the Xinjiang region have been forced into surplus labor making the polysilicon and different products for solar facilities. Ninety percent, China has ninety percent of the silicon market, polysilicon market. On the deer issue.
Would you like me to respond?
Oh, yeah, oh, go ahead, sorry.
No, you're fine, I just figured we were, we're shifting gears, so I could address those first. I know this came up at the, the planning commission hearing as well. Bring it up here again. Open acknowledgement that yes, a company called China Three Gorges, which has been hard, hard buy, the Chinese government owns a, like you said, I think roughly nineteen percent share in.
EDP?
EDP, thank you. That is, uh, one, it's a non-controlling share, they don't have any vote in how we conduct our business.
But are they part of supply of your solar?
Uh, from a, from a, so to address the first part, um, who owns our business has nothing to do with our supply. They own a portion of our company because EDP is a publicly traded stock and they chose to buy twenty percent of our company.
I think, you know why they did it, because you can't publicly trade solar stocks in the United States, they're all controlled by the Chinese government. And that's why.
There, there are solar companies that operate out of the US, if you can buy their stock.
Well, they're probably got Chinese influence. If we look at the, look at the study from the, uh, so there's the name here, Sheffield, Sheffield University. Cause they're the ones that I got that information from.
Okay.
And the New York Times put, uh, article, August twenty first, I believe was the eighth of it.
Okay, that was August twenty first?
I think so. And the Sheffield, uh, Sheffield University is September's something.
Okay.
I'd also got to do is type in.
Okay. I will look into those after this meeting. So that, I guess, addresses the twenty percent state piece. In terms of the supply piece, again, something I addressed in a previous meeting. EDPR, as with all other renewables developers in the US, have to abide by what are called CIPIS standards, which is Committee for Foreign Investment in the United States. All of our parts and pieces that we buy for the solar parts have to be on a whitelist from CIPIS. They are not, we have to get an exception for that. We do not currently plan on, on requesting an exception for any of the parts, uh, because they're all on the approved vendors list. We, there are very strict standards for anything that is built that connects to the electric grid for, for obvious US security reasons. Because our project will be connecting to the grid, we, we have, like I said, have to purchase all of our pieces, parts from the approved vendors list. And so, um, I can't speak directly for, I haven't read those articles yet, don't know if the company is involved in slave labor or the issues in China, um, are the companies that we're sourcing for, I would imagine they are not. But just want to address that there are very strict standards that we have to abide by when we buy project parts and those are set. Those are set by, well, they're, um, I mean, the CIPIS standards have been in place for years now. The, the panels that we have on hand, um, I'm sure have to abide by those standards as well. And then anything that we would source for this project specifically would also obviously have to abide by those standards.
So I guess, I guess with all that said, how, how am I supposed to sign a contract with somebody that I don't trust? And it's not in person? How? I mean.
I, I think there's, um, I will personally do everything I can to make you comfortable with that and answer any questions that I might have.
I think you're a damn good guy, but I, I don't know about who you work for.
I think, uh, at the end of the day, hopefully, um, the, the contractual requirements that we have with you would give you enough comfort to enter into that agreement and also the other requirements, laws, standards that we have to abide by. That for, I mean, we have no reason to go outside of those legal standards because it puts us at serious jeopardy as a company. When those project components can be sourced from a legal source, there would be no reason for us to go outside of that and risk our entire company being audited and shut down. That wouldn't be wise for us, it wouldn't be wise for shareholders, it wouldn't be as wise for anyone involved. And so hopefully the, the standards in place from a national standpoint and then whatever standards you were to put in place as commissioners would also give you comfort that this project would be executed in a way that you would feel comfortable with.
If, if I may, thank you. And not to undervalue now the conversation we've had or your concerns, I completely agree, we don't want. We don't want slave labor parts and we would all prefer American products. But, um, you know, the fact of, and I'm just saying this as I'm obligated as the attorney. The EDPR ownership is not relevant to the application. It's not an approval criteria component. Sourcing is not an approval criteria based issue. And so, so I understand.
Part of the approval is, is that I have to be willing to sign a contract with that company.
Yes.
And so make me believe. That's all I'm saying. And so.
And I believe that.
So that is part of the contract.
That the evidence in the record and in our rebuttal and in the application provides, you know, we've done everything we can and EDPR has really gone above and beyond to address all the commissioners and public's concern. And I think that reflects on Logan's good character and, um, the fact that we've gone through all these steps to change this project to a single layout and, you know, address all the concerns. So I would hope that that would build some goodwill and trust upon the commissioners. But again, the decision must be based on the approval criteria, not on personal sentiment. Thank you.
I'll add some more criteria. Going into the deer, um, I've been raised here my whole life. When I was a kid, there was never deer here. There was never deer in the city at all. Town is calling the deer, especially after the last solar site went in. And so that is a problem. Where are those antelope going to go? You know? So working in economic development, and I'll get to my point, but I want to just bring this up quickly. There is, people don't realize how many jobs there are available right now in Lake County. But there's no place to live. Um, that's why I asked about the neighborhood out there. I mean, that's, that'd be a damn good place for houses. The thing is, is that in, once again, the Lake County, when, you know, on page sixteen, it talks about the future uses of what the commissioners in the nineteen eighties wanted to do. And it says on south, on page sixteen, South County, East Lake Valley. It says farm residential land has been indicated from the state highway one forty north along the east side of Thomas Creek Road and west of New Piper. Possibility for future development northwest of Warner Junction is dead center in your spot. So it says northwest of Warner Junction and on scattered parcels just east of the highway, it was recognized wherever access would be available, suitable home sites could be found and developed. And development could occur without adversely affecting adjacent agriculture operations. So our previous articles were very concerned. They wanted to build houses that didn't affect, adversely affect the farm. And, um, on the map in the, in the book, it says possible future use, and there's a possible future use thing right on the map. To do with property. And so which is the northwest of Warner Creek. Okay. Do you want to address that or?
Are you, are you going to switch topics? Okay, um, yeah, we can address that if you don't mind. So I, I think we'd like to take a look at the mapping and verify those location maps.
Some pages up to.
As you've described them. So just kind of some background on the comprehensive plan. It's, it's a guiding document that influences the adoption of Lake County zoning ordinances, right? So recognizing that this was complicated years ago and there were certain ideas that could happen. I would also just go back to the description you had read before on agricultural classification descriptions. In the second half of that paragraph says that, where are you? At page six. Um, it's essential to prevent or at least minimize non-farm uses from interrupting the integrity of these areas if productivity is being maximized and financial, social and physical hardships of the sentence to be read. And then it says agricultural land should be maintained in management uses. And cite specific exceptions to allow non-farm related dwellings can be approved. Such land shall be maintained for agricultural purposes in accordance with this plan. And we cited this in the rebuttal letter where it says that the introduction of non-farm uses into ag areas may be disruptive to agricultural use. So just go back to that to kind of provide some context for the fact that this area, the Dubrav properties, currently designated under the comprehensive plan as agricultural use. And non-farm uses themselves are recognized under the comprehensive plan as inherently in conflict with that use. So, you know, both.
You're, you're going by what the state law says.
No, by what the comprehensive plan says. But at the plain terms of the comprehensive plan, we've talked about this in the rebuttal letter, so note that. But the comprehensive plan itself says that non-farm residences create conflict with agricultural use. And I'm just pointing out that the non-farm uses and that, as you question whether it was a neighborhood, is also conditional, just like the solar array is. They're both conditional uses on that land because they both could conflict with agricultural use. But as we're demonstrating in the application, this proposed use is not incompatible with agricultural use. And it doesn't violate those compatibility standards, which are whether there's serious interference with farm practices on land of the farm use, whether there's significant change in cost. So that's the standard for what the conflict is with residential land.
So speaking of that paragraph, then how do you, how do you state in your plan that you're not causing people to finance with social or physical hardships? Or conflict? I mean, everybody here is conflicted. So how are you addressing it?
So this is not approval criteria. This is the classification description. So we've addressed the.
You said in your application form that you would follow lake, local, state and federal. This is our, this is our plan, our work plan. And so you signed it. How are you going to follow?
So we'll address this in writing on rebuttal. But as I said, this is the classification description. It's not the goal or policy, which is the approval criteria. And we've addressed the approval criteria for agricultural land and demonstrated that the project satisfies those standards.
I can only have one, one other question. So on the six point two mile line that you guys got to put in from site to the transfer station from where they're upon, um, do you have a power agreement with Surprise Valley or PPML to service that line?
Uh, we would service that line. It's part of our project site. And so if there were any issues to.
So that's going to be your line, that's why the medium voltage.
Correct.
The buried line?
The buried line. Is, we would. The two, the substation, the two medium voltage lines that would be buried underground would belong to the project because they are transferring our power directly from the subs, or the PV site down to the substation. And so we would maintain and operate those lines. And we are currently working on crossing agreements for those lines and things like that. We have to, that's our responsibility. So that's all I know.
On that note, over there, is the removal of that line that is from the, from the solar plant to the substation, is that covered under the bond for restoration?
I believe so, but I can't think of that.
It is not. It's not covered.
Hundred percent, six miles.
I'll just, I'll just see what they're hiding from you then. See if what I have is covered under that. I just, I'm just curious, I didn't see it in the restoration plan.
I'll, yeah, I'll provide, or I will provide you additional more detail later.
How's everybody doing?
Yeah. Been here for two hours.
Eighteen five minute break, are we good? Break?
Let's take a break.
They're shaking their heads, huh?
Well. Well, some of us do need.
Six ten?
Yep, let's do that. Six ten, we'll recompete a six ten. Thank you. Is six ten? And we'll continue where we left off.
Do you have somebody to comment on?
From the public? Okay, as soon as we finish, if there's any other questions, we'll ask them during this.
I have questions, but I can wait for public comment.
Okay, do you, do you gentlemen have any further rebuttal? We can move back towards public comment again and then, uh, and then allow for another rebuttal.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, we'll move over back to, uh, public comment. And I don't know anything else to say. Yes, man?
Go ahead. No, Jody, go first.
Okay. Give me, Jody.
Good evening. Jody Graham, two three three six nine Thomas Creek Road. So our seventeen year old Max was one of the kids that were approached up to high school. And he was at football practice, um, so I couldn't send a, get a message to him. But I said, so where were you approached by the solar people? And he said, outside. And I said, and he says, so yes, she and I were both on school grounds.
Public comment? Yeah.
Just one quick, that's your line. Uh, Josh Roski, two oh four South S Street. Um, I guess I just want to bring up one quick little thing. When I was reviewing the Lake County Cub applications, page one and first paragraph, there's a section in there about this whole application being in a discretionary pattern. And I've seen a recurring theme by our Blue Marmot attorney where a lot of this criteria and concerns being brought forward don't meet certain criteria, so we just need to ignore some of these concerns. I don't think that's entirely true with this case. I do believe that this application is up to your guys' entire discretion. So as far as that.
And so Josh, you're here representing yourself.
Correct. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Josh.
Me again?
It's up to you.
Again, Joe Cosentino, two one, two on four Rabbit Hill Road. Few things came up while they were rebutting the comments. They're architectural sites. I worked for ODOT for over thirty years, drew plans for them, did engineering for them. And we always showed these sites on our plan. They're not like, you know, off limits. They're actually, they need to be shown so the contractor doesn't get on them. So it's not anything that's a state secret. About the glare study, um, I've never seen anything that was actually forwarded to us like we asked for before. We were promised a planned view at least and a three D view, hopefully, from EDP. Never, never seen it. And their study didn't take into consideration where our house is again. Our viewpoint is three, four hundred feet further back from Rabbit Hill Road where they did their study, so-called study. But as far as I know, looking at this program from Forge Solar, you can actually place a viewpoint anywhere on the map and get a reading to that viewpoint. So there's no reason to not give us what we're going to actually be seeing once the site is constructed. We should be able to see it. There's a way to do it in the, in the software. I don't know why they're having problems getting it or saying they can't get it. And going back to their bond assurance, we don't know what's going to happen in thirty five years. We don't even know what's going to happen in ten years or five years. This site down here has been sold at least once now. And are the conditions the same as far as financial wise between the county and where that site is? Or, yeah, nobody knows. And that's kind of a problem. I was really surprised to drive by one day, see a new sign up, new owner out of the United Kingdom. Who knew? Okay. Working for ODOT again, um, on three ninety five by Sun River, we work with the Forest Service and Wildlife Management. And we put tunnels under three ninety five at certain distances on a new construction so the deer could go underneath three ninety five and not come on, step up, come up on it and get hit. So I don't know why they couldn't put passages through this every so many feet as corridors. Antelope won't get them, but a deer might. But antelope, no way they're going to go through it.
Joe, was it, are you sure about the road, three ninety five?
Oh, yeah, no.
Ninety seven.
Ninety seven.
Quick hitch.
I think at three ninety five. Oh, if EDPR is removing the amount of solar on that about forty acre parcel, they're asking for a fifty milli, or a fifty megawatt solar farm. Where are they going to get the rest of that output from if they're not going to build that part of it? Do they need to amend their application since they're not going to be building the same size solar farm?
I thought they stated they were going to put it on the east side of the road.
Well, they, we're going to, well, they stated that they're going to move it off that, but they are going to buy that property. So it's not a question of if they're going to build there, it's when. Because they'll probably come back and ask for another application for changing that into industrial or commercial or industrial. Really concerns me though, a lot of their comments about basically keeping contracts between the county and EDPR, Blue Marmot. How are we going to be assured that any company that buys that is not going to, not want to, not want to do that? Are we even assured that Blue Marmot will come to the county and ask for any approval before they sell it? I don't know that that's in the application. We know it's going to get sold at some point. It's a money-making business. That's the bottom line. So is there any assurance in there that when they do sell it, those contract terms that they made with the county are going to be built? Thank you again for your time, guys. Thank you. Good job.
All right, well, I'll jump in again. Okay, so these are just a couple of points brought up during their rebuttal through your guys' questions. One of the things when you guys were talking about the fish and wildlife mitigation at being one point eight one, at this point, that's only if they acquire the other property. Right now with the property that they are, that is a question that, for this project, it's only at one point seven three. So they're still significantly, definitely behind that two to one because I don't think we should count one point eight one because you're, you're counting your chickens before they hatch. They haven't leased that other land. They haven't bought the other land. Right now, the only landing question is right there. And that puts their mitigation plan at one point seven three based on numbers. With, for the glare and glint study, uh, I was probably just as confused. when, for the glare and glint study, uh, I was probably just as confused as everybody else listening to you read that. But.
It was James. It was me reading it, probably.
Uh, it was very confusing, but what I got out of that was they're using FAA standards for airports because they don't have standards for residences.
Yes. So that's what I was reading it.
It's irregardless of if they have those standards or not, because an airport is not a residence. You cannot apply the standards to an airport to a house. They're not the same. So that's just my little soapbox. Um, I'd also argue that rangeland is agricultural land. We're getting into semantics, so let's not. If we're growing cows, we're growing pasture, growing crops, it's all agriculture. So it's all agricultural land. Um, the, at nineteen-point-seven percent, China is the majority shareholder of that company. And we all know it's a publicly traded company. You can't control who buys and sells shares. But you can't tell me that the majority shareholder does not have the ear of a company. Because that's just how the world works. And that, the fact that they are the majority shareholder needs to be taken into account. Um, my last point was in regard to the comprehensive plan when Mark was talking about the rangeland and the development of the houses by it. Um, the EDP's attorney here said that it was written a long time ago with what the planners at the time would like to see. Yet, when they rebutted our earlier comments regarding the renewable energy regulations that were written forty-one years ago, his comment was that it didn't matter when the world, rules were written. Those are the rules, and those are the rules you have to go by. You can't have it both ways. So either we disregard all the rules because they're forty-one years old, or we follow the rules because those are the rules that are written. But we can't have it both ways. All right.
Once again, Eric Muir, President of Rabbit Hill Road, and addressing two things that came up in the rebuttal. Uh, one is the original alternatives analysis, and once again, yeah, within the application, it states that the alternative analysis should not be biased or based on economic losses or gains. But yet it is stated within their own application that the ten-mile radius was an economic determination of why they didn't look at other sites outside of that radius. And then continuing on with the economics. A-one land is, is where the residents live and where we raise cattle, and it also states that there should not be an economic impact to adjacent lands, A-one lands. And I think we've already determined, uh, one property wasn't able to sell because of that. That's an economic impact. I don't know how adverse it is for other people, but even a twenty-thousand-dollar loss to my property value is adverse to me. I think it's probably adverse to to most people in this room. So it is an adverse impact to the neighbors. Thank you.
Concerns about, again, I think joining today's solar panel meetings for a long time. So the last time I came, it was stated that we think they're going to last twenty-five to thirty years. There was, they didn't know. They hadn't had solar farms in existence for that long. Maybe they have been. Nobody's ever proved to me that they have. But if they've been in working for that many years, why can't they show a decommissioned site and what it's going to look like? We keep being told after they're decommissioned, the land will be brought back to, which, I'm sorry, what the attorney said doesn't quite.
Useful, non-hazardous.
Thank you.
Nonoriginal.
Not original. Useful, non-hazardous state. So somewhere along the line, it has to be shown to everyone once they're decommissioned. How is that ever going to be brought back to its original state? You can quote, ORS has told the moon, whatever. And it, it needs to be known. Have they been in commission for that long? Have they been decommissioned yet? What does the land look like? Can anybody actually tell you or me or the other people what it's going to be like? We don't know. So I, I guess that's one of my biggest concerns. Granted, I'm not going to be here in thirty years. I'm pretty darn sure of that. But if they've already been in existence for thirty years, I was only thirty-six. And I don't think there were solar farms that many years ago. So I, I want to know how they have this proof that they're going to bring it back to, as Amanda said, the non-hazardous whatever, and grow another crop. Thank you.
One of the interesting things about rangeland is, uh, the one-point-three or
Stay your name again.
Richard Bradbury.
Thank you.
One, one, one-third of all of the planet is rangeland. Approximately, um, wait, I take that back. Seventy-five percent of the planet is rangeland. That's not underwater. Um, of that seventy-five percent, it produces one-third. So there's no question that rangeland is also actually agricultural land, and rangeland is highly dependent on ruminants and unguents like deer, cattle, sheep, goats, um, also to that across the world. So rangeland's never in debate whether it's agricultural or not. Um, then when you start talking about disruption of carbon sinks, uh, rangelands are one of the largest holders of carbon in the United, in, in the world. And, uh, I find it highly doubt, indoubtable to put this in there. Every time you uh, scar, uh, rangeland or disrupt the sagebrush ecosystem, microbiome, you are disrupting the carbon that it's holding, and it's immediately released. Um, the numbers would have to be outstanding for this eight-hundred acres to ever say that this solar plant would ever be able to replace that carbon back into the rangeland carbon sink that it is in now. And I highly doubt that, um, I think it's a good, she made a good point. Um, solar will probably phase out by then or nuclear within fifteen years. And, um, so, uh, I don't, I don't see how they're ever going to, they may not ever produce enough, offset enough carbon to even balance what they're taking by developing the site. So that's all highly questionable, and if you really look into it, I think that the carbon that's in that acreage right now is probably greater than what it produced. Um, I've worked in the industry, energy industry for ten years. I've seen a lot of, uh, oil sites developed. Um, I can guarantee you that the companies in, uh, solar and renewable energy seem to act much like oil and gas companies. Uh, West Texas is fighting huge battles right now with, um, companies that have traded and traded and traded properties from the original person to build it. And those landowners and those communities are not seen to believe as far as those sites being cleaned up. And it's one of the biggest issues in Texas right now. And I don't see that, um, the renewable energy companies have any other practices. And really, the biggest reason for sale is for them to offset with oil and gas companies what they are producing. So odds are that eventually this site will be sold to an oil and gas company to offset somewhere where they're going in West Texas, California, North Dakota. So, um, the oil and gas companies, especially some of the majors and the minors, uh, the mid-level guys, do not have a really good track record of maintaining their lands. And rather than maintain it, they usually just, um, trade it down to a smaller company and it becomes script wells, and they just do marginal barrels permitted out of every well. And it just continues to trickle down until eventually there's somebody that cannot afford to do it. I think that we've learned this lesson a really hard way in Lake County with the, um, uranium tailers. These guys, um, they wear a green jacket and they talk green, but they're really no different than the, anybody else that's extorting resources from rural communities.
Richard, I got a question. Could you give me a general idea of where the property is for sale that you talked about in your first?
I can. It's probably dead center, uh, Rabbit Hill Road, just past the, the, um, Refuge.
Same site as Refuge, or that?
Just across the street from me.
Just across.
I saw him out there this weekend.
Okay.
And, um, I just, uh, I've been doing comps and everything. I cannot even begin to imagine, there's lots of properties around for sale there. I could not even begin to imagine how much this is going to increase the value of land. And economically for the future of Lake County, I just think that this is a, is terrible. And, uh, I think we have so much more to bank on in our natural aesthetic beauty. And, um, this is going to single out and sort of thing that that's not what we're, that's not what we're about. We're about something else and what's really ironic about it is they're the ones that benefit from us, and they're taking every, every profit and revenue out of it. And what we're going to see in the end is convinced. And I think we're going to have a large headache from this kind of thing.
No, I'm just thinking outside. If there's any other public comment?
All right, um. I got a quick question for a member of the public. John, so when they mitigate with fish and wildlife, the mitigation doesn't necessarily have to happen in Lake County, right? I mean.
Do you want to come up?
Yeah, sure.
For the record, John Muir was born in Fish and Wildlife. Uh, so the, the mitigation, the OFW mitigation policy speaks to in-kind and in-proximity. So it, it doesn't necessarily include a county line. If a project were to occur right on a line, it could, that mitigation could occur in a neighboring county, but it does need to be in-kind and in-proximity, which is how we end up with where there are impacts to big game water range, that, that's where the in-kind thing comes in. So we wouldn't want to see, and the, the OFW would not approve a mitigation plan that included, for instance, high-elevation lodgeable forests as mitigation for low-elevation water. So there is a standard that it's, that it is in-kind and in-proximity.
Okay, so ODOT, Highway three-ninety-five builds ponds north of Cricket Creek. That is mitigation for something that happens somewhere else.
But that, that mitigation that ODOT did, it's not beholden to or tied to the OFW mitigation policy in any way.
That's their own mitigation.
Anything else? And the same, I would imagine, for us, at our discretion, we could technically deviate from that we want mitigation somewhere else. We can still ask for that mitigation.
That's correct.
Correct.
That's correct. So OFW has approved of the applicant's mitigation plan of the sand. And I, and I think you spoke to it well, where there's a lot of discussion about that one-point-eight-to-one ratio. And just to clarify that, uh, our recommendation was two-to-one. That's our standard recommendation for impacts in big game water range. As you noted, it's not a legal standard. Uh, so when, when the applicant states that we've accepted their plan, that's, that's correct. We accepted what they offered, which, which was one-point-eight-to-one, given the acquisition of, of more companies. Now, I might, just because I'm, I'm here, I might take a moment to, to clarify how, or maybe correct something that I heard earlier from the applicant with regards to how that analysis occurs. Um, it's, it's not so, there is very much a site-specific component to developing a mitigation plan. But that, the ratio itself really is not site-specific. Our recommendation was two-to-one, with big game water range. Uh, and so it wasn't a, a cooperated or coordinated effort that we, that we agreed to. We agreed to what they offered. And that's, that's what.
Donkey the grill, yeah? We hear a lot, we heard a lot of comment about wildlife and about the, you know, the use that it's had for many, many years. The way that they have this plan on the map there with the blue and whatnot, do you feel like, um, I mean, obviously you approved it, but is it kind of putting them in, uh, corridors? And, I mean, are you saying that it's okay, that you feel it's okay for them to go around it, or?
Well, no, I mean, this, the, these kind of projects come very tall tents, as we know, and so that becomes a barrier. There's no question about it. I, you know, we've, we've discussed as an agency, I've discussed, as an agency, with the applicant concerns about the tunnel effect that's going to be created on Rabbit Hill Road. Um, just the way that project is laid out, I can see kind of a funnel through there that's going to come in conflict with, with traffic on the road. Um, there's, almost all the big game animals in this country exhibit at some point minor sort of behaviors. But at least on a seasonal basis, there's movement across the enemy valleys, we all know. And that does become a barrier. But, you know, it's, it's my role in this is to evaluate what they, what they propose to offset those impacts in accordance with the policy, and that's what we signed up for.
Have you ever seen other plans where they've mitigated and broken up a little bit?
Yeah, yeah, there's, um, you know, in fact, other, other solar projects in this county have broken up their mitigation parcels or proposed to. Again, it, for us, in our review, it comes back to that, that criteria of in-kind and in-proximity. And that's a, that's a loosely defined term. Uh, what is proximity and how close do you have to be? And that's all part of, of the negotiations that we end up, we end up in. But in this case, where they're right adjacent to the project in fact, that obviously meets that standard.
So the deer and animal that currently use that area, another wildlife, if we chose to use other properties that aren't that close, it's fair to say that it's not going to mitigate the current animals that use it?
Well, that's, that's correct. And, and so while it absolutely is at the discretion of the commission to dictate the, the ratio, the mitigation ratio, and, and you guys absolutely have the authority to request or, or suggest uh, other parcels that don't align with that standard. However, the, for, for the project to be in compliance with state law, uh, the, the half-time management, or the half-tensionation plan that we signed off on would need to occur. So if you guys wanted to do something somewhere else, it would, it would be mostly in addition to what's proposed.
So John, on the map, it looks like where they've made the wildlife mitigation, it looks like they're pushing the antelope toward the east, which would be coming in conflict with Highway, um, three-ninety-five and, and that. And so there's a high possibility that those antelope could be out in the road.
That's right. That's right. But I will tell you that, um, you know, originally, as you guys all recall, that, that was, potentially, that entire site could be was originally proposed to be developed with panels. And I was highly concerned about an acre fence right along the highway for that stretch of, of road. Um, and so, you know, one of the, one of the, one of the things that we're, we're agreeing to and that we're we're acknowledging their efforts to do is to lock up through either working land agreement or conservation easement of some form, whether or not a legal conservation easement or not, that ground such that that kind of development can't occur. And so that is ultimately a, a major component of, of how they're mitigating those impacts. But you're right, the, the, you know, there'll be a, a substantial barrier to movement. There, there's no question. But you're right, the, the, you know, there'll be a substantial barrier to movement. There's no question.
So, sorry to keep asking questions, but so if that property sells and they take the solar off, is that land that they mitigated for wildlife, could it be used for anything else later?
It could not be used for development purposes.
So you're getting rid of all that land for development. So we're losing all that.
Yeah, that is, that's how they're mitigating further project impacts is to maintain that in the state.
And that doesn't matter who owns it? I mean, it's gone.
Yeah. That's, that's ultimately what, what a working lands agreement or conservation easement seeks to achieve. And in a simple way, and I'm sure that there are attorneys that would argue that I'm not, I'm not expressing this correctly. But in my mind, the simple, simple way to think about an easement is you're, you're selling rights to the land the same way as you would be selling mineral rights, timber rights, selling development rights. And that's a virtue.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
I have questions.
Yeah, sure. Well, I'll ask for any additional public comment, I suppose. If there being none, that last final call for public comment, we would last, we would make one final request for the applicant to give a final rebuttal. And then we would ask some questions potentially as well.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Max Yoplik, for the record. I don't have any further oral rebuttal to give because I'd like to address, you know, some of these complex issues in writing so that we can be very clear about what the legal standards are and our position as to why the application has satisfied those standards. But I thank you for considering all the public comments and John for providing his insight. And we're happy to answer any questions unless Logan wants to offer some rebuttal.
Logan, do you have any rebuttal?
I don't believe I have any rebuttal that would be applicable to the criteria. There are several points that were brought up that I could discuss for the sake of the community. I'd like also go over briefly, just a few quick points. Mr. Constantino brought up that archaeological sites can be disclosed to contractors. Contractors will know where those archaeological sites are. It's just not public knowledge. That's why we haven't divulged it during this process. In the GLAIR study specifically, it talks about, it, it does mention the specific residences and their locations were considered in that GLAIR study. So to the point that it was just analyzed from Rabbit Hill Road, that's not the case. The question about where will the other, where will the panels go? You know, the project has to be 50 megawatts. We redesigned the site to exclude that land west of the ravine and have still maintained 50 megawatts within the current buildable area. So it's just the movement of the panels. It's not that we're going to have to come back later and put panels on that land, which we've just said we won't.
So a quick question on that.
Yep.
So what you're saying is there, that there have been archaeological discoveries on the site, but, and, and I would assume that a lot of these, the placement of the panels does seem a bit choppy in places. So what you're saying is typically within those areas where there are not panels, you made discovery. But you're not disclosing the exact location?
But, uh.
Okay, so maybe.
There's other general constraints that have to be avoided. It's not, but.
Well, other than.
I don't want to answer.
So cultural resources are not disclosed publicly because they're sensitive. So that's why the cultural resources survey was submitted undercover to SHIPPO. And SHIPPO, as Logan mentioned, has issued a concurrence that the project will not impact those resources. So.
I guess just one last comment is, Ms. O'Brien brought up that the OFW plan only works if we obtain other property. And just want to state for the record that that's currently contained within the conditions of approval. Prior to building permanent issuance, we would have an agreement for that other property. So we sign on complying with that condition under the proposal. But I'll just include that.
Do you have questions?
Yeah.
Okay. So at the beginning of the meeting, he showed us this.
Yep.
And appreciate that. That's about 50% of what I asked about. I understand that that's what you do. I, I guess I need to know, and I understand that you're still going to have a 50-megawatt site. We've gotten a lot of public comment from the people that live on Thomas Creek Road on the very north end of the project. I guess I need to know, did you just get wider with, with the north-south piece there on the east side? Or where did it go? Because the people on the very north end are also extremely concerned. Are we adding more solar up there or what are we doing?
No, the solar, the, the solar would fit within the area that's currently showed as fenced area. There, so anything that you see in a black dotted line is essentially our, our buildable area as it stands right now. And so the latest project layout would contain all of the necessary solar panels within that fenced area that you're seeing there. There's no, there's no addition of space necessarily. It's just a consolidation and movement of panels around within that area.
So some of the space that was between the panels, that's small.
Essentially.
And, and the black lines are the fence lines. That's where the fence would be?
In that layout, yes. But that's the, in this map, that is the clearest way to mitigate roughly the buildable area of this land that we have conducted the necessary surveys for and could build our site on.
Okay. In the first meeting, we talked about fire, well, then has been brought up tonight. We found out that we were missing some line on the north end where we didn't, we weren't using a road all the way around it to protect from fire either from this, from the solar panels going north or from a fire from the north burning on. Do you have any updates to that?
Not on that specific point, no. We, as, as stated before, we, you know, took into consideration the requests of the local fire department when we put together this layout of the perimeter roads. And so that is why we, we have it the way that it is, but I don't have any updates since the last meeting.
In the first meeting, we asked about if we could see a copy of the power purchase agreement. You guys stated that you disclosed that.
Correct.
Correct. But you did provide us Schedule 201 and 202, which is a blank one. Is that correct?
The 201 is the, the blank form, like the form agreement that we currently, those are the agreements we currently have signed. 202, it outlines like what that process is, which is not provided for.
Okay. So can you tell us when you have to provide power to PGE?
PGE.
PGE. To fulfill this.
We, we have an agreement in place to have our project operational by the end of next year.
End of next year. I see in this agreement that it's good for 20 years. What happens after 20 years?
So the power burden's agreement would be in place for, we're on actually 15 years. We'll be on that. We need to revisit that. But after those 15 years, we do what's called seller emergent, which is basically every single day of the year, every minute of the day, there are merchant power prices. And we would sell into the local grid and off-takers in general on the market. And we would receive whatever they're going to write in for that power. We've heard that we have some.
We're in turn.
Yeah, I'm not following. Okay.
Could you?
So after, would you say after 15 years? So we have a, a contract in place to sell the power, a certain amount of power to PGE for the next 15 years. At a set rate, for every megawatt hour of electricity that is produced, we would receive a settlement for that megawatt hour. And that is for the next 15 years. That provides us with a guaranteed return on the project, knowing that that is the rate we will get for those megawatt hours produced during that timeline. And so whatever that guaranteed return is, is factored pretty heavily into how we understand our economic assumptions for the project. Around past those 15 years, there are day-to-day and hour-to-hour rates for electricity. This happens every day, every minute. It's already played out, it happens right now. There is a, a market for electricity that we would sell our electricity into at those daily rates. And so we would.
Wouldn't necessarily be PGE?
No. It would go to the, this, the local power market. And we've got a whole team to take care of those assumptions. But basically, we, we sell the power to the grid at the going rate for the remainder of the project's lifespan.
Okay. So 15 years isn't even halfway to 35. What, what is the going rate? Like, do you have any idea what the going rate is right now?
Today?
I mean, how's it compared to your guarantee rate? Is it less? Is it more?
Uh, to be completely honest, it doesn't entirely matter, especially for the sake of these discussions. We have our own economic assumptions that are put together by people that know a heck of a lot more about this than I do. And they, and they have projected the going rates in the future, starting at year 15. And they have to factor in our assumed returns in order to understand whether the project makes economic sense. And given our assumptions, we believe the project does make economic sense.
So that leads me to the next question then. Are there any out clauses? I mean, what if it's not making economic sense? Is there out clauses for ADPR for the project?
Yeah. Um, to be completely honest, most of our renewable projects' costs are upfront within construction. Once it's operating, costs are fairly low. And so we are incentivized to operate the facility for as long as we possibly can because every hour of generation that we put on the grid and sell is revenue for the company that helps reimburse us for the upfront costs. And so the, the only way that it wouldn't make economic sense to continue operating the facility is if the operating costs were higher than the annual revenue. And given how low operating costs are on a solar project in the long run, we're fairly certain that we will continue. It'll continue to make economic sense to operate the project through the 30-year, 35-year life of the panels.
Can PGE cut you guys off? I mean, can they end the contract? For the reasons.
I mean, as with any contract, there's certain performance requirements that have to be met.
I mean, what if, you're, you got 50 megawatts or 53 megawatts, whatever it is. Would if your solar panels were only producing 40? I mean, can they?
Well, there's.
You're drilling me. I mean, I'm just asking.
No, it's, there's a, there's a pretty good understanding of, in our models, we understand the electricity generation, the, the electrical losses that are assumed. The, we have years and years of like environmental data or like minute by minute how long the sun is shining each day. And we project that out into the future. And so we estimate future electricity inputs accounting for degradation rates of panels, et cetera. I mean, once this thing's built, it's, it's, like I said, all the costs are upfront for the most part. It's pretty easy to predict how it will perform over time, given historical environmental data that we use in our models. So there, I guess to get back to your initial question, all of that, those assumptions are agreed to in advance with PGE. It would take some pretty abnormal circumstances for us to perform below what we've projected with PGE. And so we don't anticipate any issues during the term of that contract.
Okay. This X that you have on the southwest corner, would that now become mitigation acres?
I got clearance for that X today, so I haven't really had time to think about that. But that is not currently the plan to use that as mitigation acres.
As mitigation acres?
As, well, as, as.
A mitigation.
Uh, like, we.
Well, that's mitigation.
It is not currently planned to use that as part of the habitat mitigation area. And so the eastern side of the Duburu site is earmarked for habitat mitigation area. There's been no discussion with OFW about whether that land could be used in the same way. We wouldn't want to make any sort of assumptions like that. So as of right now, we do not plan on using that land for mitigation area.
Is that because you'd have plenty of mitigation acres with the other purchase of the other property?
Uh, it's purely because we don't want this to happen today. So I don't know. I don't know if we would even be allowed to use that as mitigation area. That's the conversation we were making with OFW outside of this room.
So you found room for those 40 acres. You got room for another 67.
Uh, I, I wish I could say yes to that, but we looked pretty long and hard at this. And I know it's been said, our costs don't, don't mean anything. It's not your concern. But from an economical standpoint, there's nowhere else for us to really put purple like panels anywhere else on this project. We had to squeeze those panels in to the rest of the layout in order to get those off the west side of the ravine. There's nowhere else to really put additional panels. We've already squeezed our space about as much as we can. And just, you know, for the record, just want to make it clear that I understand we'd love for more panels to be moved. I understand if we could, you know, move the whole project. But at the end of the day, there's, you know, we're, we're doing what we can to try and address the concerns and hope that. the concerns and hope that the efforts we've made in terms of decommissioning, in terms of moving panels are recognized. They're not, none of those are trivial efforts on our part. It's not easy to redesign a solar park. There's a lot of moving parts and a lot of different factors. And so just want to make it clear that these are not small efforts on our part to make these changes. We're really doing what we can to meet the county and address the concerns that have been raised, going back to being on irrigated ag land and moving off of that. We're making changes that, that are not easy for us, but we are trying to do it in order to be a good partner for the county.
Mr. Bradbury brought up a point about carbon and it's a good point, but is there any part in the requirement of you guys addressing carbon?
No, that's not, that's not a criteria by any means. And it's, yes, there will be carbon that will leak into the air during construction, but if you were to get those 50 megawatts of generation from a traditional generating plant, it would produce far more carbon than any carbons will turn up during the construction phase of the project. So if carbon's a concern, I feel like renewable energy is a pretty safe bet.
It's a question. Thank you for stating that. So going on onto the fence subject, I just, as is addressed here in the criteria, under section 20, 112, our county ordinance is. You're constructing a fence of seven feet high with an additional one foot of barbed wire on the top. Is there a particular reason why, and I suppose maybe I'd like to delve into, why you want to construct a fence that high in the first place? Is it for, is it for, to bar the site of the solar panels? To protect, security? What, what exactly is the purpose of that?
To be completely honest, seven-foot fence with a foot of barbed wire is our typical design of a fence around a solar project. So we confirmed that that met the county's specs as they are in the criteria. And once we confirm that our traditional specs match the requirements, we will.
And do you fence all of your sites particularly?
Yes, sites, both solar and substation, and to defend for security purposes. For variety reasons.
I really don't have a ton of any questions right now. I have been compiling a lot of things that I just need to go back and research and compile my questions for the next meeting. Do you have any further to add? Darwin, what is the current schedule for the third meeting?
It's definitely just up to you guys when you want. There's a chance the rebuttal could be submitted sooner, so you could meet sooner. You know, as soon as that's complete, then I'll get to you. You do need to be time-specific, time and date. So if you were to set a date and you weren't ready by then, you could obviously continue it. So my recommendation would be, you know, make sure the applicant has enough time to give you that rebuttal, to review it, and then how that meeting's scheduled, if it were to come in, say by next Wednesday, then a week later, or even the Tuesday, the second, you could meet. That would give you guys, obviously, everything that you've had to date and the new things that came in today, then you would have time to review those and the rebuttal within the next week. So it's up to you. So just when you do close this meeting, make sure you have a time and date set. And really, if you're closing public comment now, barring obviously the smell of a rebuttal, any questions that you might have, you know, should be very limited in that next hearing because anything new, additional, would potentially ask, you know, could result in a continuance of that hearing.
Right. Well, and as I already stated, that pretty much this was the final rebuttal. And that was the pattern, that was the system that we used for the prior meeting. I don't believe, unless there is objection from the commissioners, that we would be opening the backup for additional public comment. So as of right now, the public comment is closed. Just looking here at my notes for, can it do a week of 15, so it's got to be four months? Yes, we have, I guess. Correct. So next Wednesday is the 27th, and then the following week is that first week of November, we have our combined session for Christmas time on the 2nd. So we would likely be holding a special session either later that week or on the following week of the 8th of November. Is that a preference from the board? Trying to pull up the calendar.
It's for sure on Tuesday that you guys are in Christmas time?
Yes, yes. It's scheduled, we have a hearing on the 8th of November, so we have maybe.
Yeah.
Go on the 2nd of November. No, we're looking at the 8th of November potentially, or the week of the 8th of November, unless you wanted to do a special session for this in this hearing on the 3rd or 4th, or even the 5th of the first week. Okay. So the Wednesday of that second week of November. Let me go look at my calendar. Yeah, no, no worries. And I think the 8th or 9th is open for myself. We can definitely move into it if it doesn't. Okay. So we're still looking at that Tuesday.
No, I'm just.
Yes, no.
Did tell the applicant that they intend to send this in.
The 29th of October. Okay.
Yeah, and we would be happy to provide the rebuttal sooner if that would assist the board or make them more comfortable in holding the meeting at an earlier timeframe.
Okay. You guys. So we're, we said in the previous meeting, thank you, Tom, that we were going to allow the applicant until the 29th of October to present their final rebuttal. They might, they stated that they might be able to get their final rebuttal to us sooner. But then again, you know, we want to have some time to look at it. We could potentially put it in that first week of November on the 3rd or 4th, but Mark was saying Tuesday, Wednesday. On the 9th, 10th, 15th. Okay, so then is what you're looking at. Does the 3rd or 4th work for I or even the 5th?
Well, remember we've got the OIT president coming over on the 3rd, but it's.
Okay.
But it's over by one-ish.
See, that only gives us, that only gives us a couple days to look at it. Correct. Okay. So I'd like to have. Okay.
We can, what Max was saying earlier, that it would help, we believe we can get our rebuttal in by next Tuesday, Wednesday, 16th, 27th.
Okay. So that would technically give us a week if we did it, say, on the 4th or the 5th. But I'm not trying to push, I'm just, at all, we can, we can definitely.
These are, have a meeting from 1:00 to 3:00 on the 4th for bootleg and could compete.
Okay.
It's pretty important.
Now, wait a second, we're doing the after action, would you, like, on the 3rd or something?
First.
On the 1st, okay.
So the morning of the 4th is available. Yep. Later afternoon, the 3rd's available.
Well, it sounds like 4th. Yeah, for him. So.
I can do it.
We can do it, we have to do it on the 3rd. Well, honestly, on the 4th and the 5th, to give you that example.
5th, I have.
Okay.
5th.
Why are you the 5th, I can't? All right. So it's got to be a 4th or 3rd. Did you say there was something on the 4th there that you have to fit yourself?
One or three PAs.
We're all booked. That's right.
Not too badly, too.
Correct.
No, this is different. This is coordination.
So honestly, we could, we can still push it out to the 10th if that works for you. If that, if that's better for you. Okay. Is it a time on the 10th?
I do look at, although I can't make any comments for the.
No, but this is for our discussion and for us to go through the record and one by one addressing the criteria and concerns. So.
I just have a meeting from 8 to 9.
Okay. Do we want to start it in the afternoon at 1:00 after lunch?
Let's say 10:00.
10:00, okay. We have to invite our employees to get to lunch. We can definitely do 10:00. Okay.
10:00?
10:00.
Commissioner, can I ask a clarification point?
Yes.
So on the 10th at 10:00 AM, you'll be holding a deliberation that will be open to the public but closed for public comment, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And would you like the applicant to be present to answer questions or?
Yes, because I think even though we allow for that final rebuttal and for Claire, and I can check, we can check the legal counsel here, make sure that that's appropriate, but I do believe that it would be useful for this board to be able to ask questions at that final. And that's how we did it before.
Correct. Yes, I'd appreciate it, Peter. Sorry, we go to make sure that that's okay.
Yeah. Jim Bailey, are you still on the line?
Yes, I'm still here. That would be totally a follow-up, it's part of your decision process.
Okay. So yes, we would, we would very much appreciate you to have the people helping at any, if seen necessary, to have presence here for answers to our questions. Thank you for clarifying. Thank you. So Wednesday's the 10th, at 10:00 AM, we will reconvene this meeting, reconvene and adjourned for a final deliberation and decision on this matter.
And is there a, with that being, is there a, like, a rebuttal by?
Let's, for that, Matt, I mean, you said you could give it to us by the 27th, but we could, per se, if consistency, allow you to go to the 29th, because that's what we stated in the previous meeting.
A free candidate person.
Okay.
But for my personal, I'd just like a week of being able to review it.
Absolutely. So we'll have that whole week of the first of November and the first few days of that second week. And again, appreciate it. And we appreciate the public's time in coming here today and we really appreciate the confidence given. They're very useful for us. This is obviously a big process, large record to go over, and we've received a lot of emails and a lot of letters from the public and we very much appreciate that info. So thank you, the applicant, for being here. Appreciate your time as well. And with that, we will go ahead and move, close today's hearing. It is 15 minutes after 7:00. Thank you all.